All right, we'll call this meeting of the Freeman School Board to order. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Legals. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item on the agenda is roll call. Cody? Yes. Cody Franston? Doug?
Yes.
Carissa Pozzoli?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
All right, next item on the agenda will be approval of the agenda. Please note that it should say it will require a motion to approve the agenda, not the amended agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Doug. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Carissa. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is conflict of interest disclosures. I perceive none.
None.
Next item on the agenda, public input.
There was none.
Next item on the agenda, consent agenda. Will require a motion to approve the following minutes of the regularly scheduled school board meeting of December 12, 2022, the minutes of the formal cooperative board of advisors meeting of December 13, 2022, financial reports and claims. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Cody Spangler. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Doug. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, administrative reports, starting with elementary principal.
We haven't been here too much, so there's not a lot to report on. But December 21st, we did a data dig with the colony, looking at our math testing data. The elementary got their Christmas concert in on the afternoon of the ninth, and I was pleasantly surprised to see the crowd we had for afternoon concert. It was pretty full. Parent-teacher conferences are scheduled for February 14th and 15th. And during conferences, then we run the book fair. And the book fair is a little different this year. It looks like Becky and Kelly Kruger are gonna do it together and run the book fair this year. That's basically our only fundraiser for the elementary library. All the funds were used for buying books for the elementary library. And then we had some carryover Title I funds that we had to spend. And one of the things that we were able to do was kind of limited what we could spend it on. But there's a national conference in Indianapolis. So we're gonna send a crew of four to the national conference in Indianapolis. You think they could've picked someone warm for that conference, but they didn't. And then the elementary honor choir selections are below. As I was printing it from last, looking at last year's report, it looked like a lot of the same kids got on again this year, so must be some talented kids there. They'll perform up in Brookings on February 9th. And I see we have a fourth grader. I don't remember a fourth grader getting on there before.
He did.
Did he?
Awesome. Shane? All right, next item on the agenda is administrative report, high school principal.
All right. Seniors gave their capsule project presentations. It got rescheduled a few times, but they worked around that. That went well. Thank you to all the staff, mentors, the admin that came to watch, and then the judges who took the time to come and help that day. That was Emily and then Melissa Schrag and Diane Ellinger, so that was good. Dual credit grades came in, all passing except two courses, so that's good. Good learning there, too. And then our internship and our service learning courses, those are going well. We had some students sign up this semester that hadn't signed up last semester and some that are continuing, so that's good. And, you know, we appreciate those local businesses and the staff members in our building that are helping and have agreed to lead those students with those internships and service learning courses. So our staff lunch took place on January 6th, so a big thanks to Judy Schrag for preparing that meal for our staff to enjoy. That came from the administration, so. And then two new students on high school, a seventh grader. I don't remember, I don't, I don't think that we knew that for the last four meetings.
No, we didn't write that before Christmas.
Yeah, before Christmas. So it was a seventh grader, and then we got a new one today, so that was a sophomore student. So that's good. The only challenge I think we've had at this point is weather, so. And then those are just the three.
Well, I got. Awesome. It's Katie. All right, superintendent report.
Speaking of the theme here, seems like we've had a lot of cancellations and reschedules, and same goes for my updates. We have, feels like I've been presenting all this stuff for the last couple months, and I still haven't got the first meeting in. But we have a calendar coming in that we'll be starting to meet here. Got to reschedule from where we're supposed to meet on the third, January 3rd, that professional development day. So we'll reschedule that day. We're gonna stick, we're gonna adjust, slightly adjust our timeline. We were originally thinking that we would have the first draft of the 2023-2024 school year calendar at this meeting. We'll have to push that since we weren't able to meet till the February meeting, but we still have plenty of time to get that presented and approved in a timely manner here. Another one that's being rescheduled will be a school safety plan review committee, so one we've been talking about for a little while. That's that last month, I mentioned a team of six individuals, that our school district staff and our law enforcement crew that will be coming in and diving into our plan. We have that first, first meeting tomorrow at nine o'clock in my office, so excited to get that rolling. Our plan for that committee would be that we meet periodically throughout the rest of the school year, possibly even into the summer, that we present a new updated school safety plan to the board in the summer for it to be implemented in the 2023-2024 school year. I've communicated through our cabinet meeting with our principals that we need to, we're at that point in the year where we need to start talking about our staff structure. Some part of that would be Shane presenting with the, what the staffing plan will look like for next year as our bigger classes get older and transition into the next year. And then for Katie, what we're looking at as far as our enrollment, and it seems like every board meeting she's presenting that we got more students coming in at the high school level. So looking at any additional staffing, what are the potential needs? And we've discussed a handful already. We'll get those needs ironed out and communicate with Debbie and see where we're at as far as the financials go. And we'll have a plan to present to you at the February meeting. We have been notified that we are up for an accreditation review. We, I will be attending a accreditation support training on January 25th to learn a little bit more about what that all entails. It's the first time I've gone through that, so learn about what documents need to be submitted and what that process will look like. Legislative session starts tomorrow with Governor Noem State of the State address. Currently, she is still supporting a 5% increase for public education. Special education child count is due on January 13th. Freeman was the, one of the first schools in the co-op to submit the child count, fed child counts, a compliment to Mr. Boss on that for being one of the first schools to get that done. I will give my final certification by February 17th. Our new school bus is finished, and we'll be delivered hopefully within the next couple of weeks here. We have the, I don't know if I've presented this last month or not, but the school, the new school van is here. It's in the parking lot, so it's nice to have that here as well. So that does make us ADA compliant and we have handicap accessibility, so that's a good thing for the district to have. And the final item that I have is the professional development day from January 3rd and what we'd be looking at for a makeup day. And I want to give the school board an opportunity to weigh in on this. Currently, what I'm thinking is give staff an option. We kind of play into the flexible PD concept that we brought in this year. Give staff an opportunity to either come in on May 15th. That would be the Monday after the last day of school. If they don't want to do flexible PD, they can just come in for the full day on the 15th. If they would like to do flexible PD, then we would give them between May 15th and May 31st to be able to put, log those eight hours on their own, at their own time, at their own pace. Curious if the board had any input on that January 3rd professional development day that was canceled due to inclement weather.
Whatever's most convenient, I don't have a preference. Or else let folks decide what's, what works best for their schedules. Knowing that they're gonna be, and there's accountability to make sure that you get it done, but I don't, I mean, I don't personally have an issue with either date or approach, so.
Go ahead.
Awesome. Great.
All right, next item on the agenda is unfinished business. The school board will hold a discussion about adding an activity photographer stipend.
Jeremy? You know what it's called?
So nicely.
Do you want me to stand at the podium?
Wherever you're comfortable.
All passed. So you can read through this. I'll just kind of go through this with you. Ten years roughly, I've been taking team photos of all of our primary team sports. And I arrange it through the coaches. They ask me to come in, and I do team photos, individual photos, and I bring in lighting, and it's a, it's a production. I do it right for the, for the kids. And then I make those photos available on my website for purchase by families. They can either purchase prints or download. I've also made the photos available to the school upon request. A lot of times, Mrs. Sage needs, needs a photo of a team for a, for a program or for a state book or something along those lines, so I just email those over. And then more recently, I've been doing just a little bit more photography for the district upon request. Not a ton. Mrs. Yonkey had me in here last year to take a couple of headshots and to do the seniors, and more than happy, more than happy to do that. And then I'm occasionally throwing a photo or two Seth's way for the website. He'll occasionally ask me for one as well. And so, and I've been happy to do all these things and not, not bill anything out because my kids go here. I feel like it's service that I'm offering to the district, but we're getting to a point now where I'm almost feeling like I need to be compensated for my time because it is, it is taking some time. And so I guess I'm formally asking for a stipend. I know I talked to Mr. Tiji about it a while back. He said he brought it up to you. And there's a couple of things about this that I think would be advantageous to the district. Number one, if I continue to do these team and individual photos, which I plan to do, the idea was I wouldn't charge anything to do those, and I would make my money by people buying the photos from me on my website. And that has become less and less all the time. People just don't do that as much as they used to. A lot of times, they're taking a screenshot of it, just using that for whatever they want to use. And that's fine. I, I don't really have a problem with it, but it's kind of interfering with sort of my business plan, if you will, there. By doing this, by the district covering this compensation, I would be able to post those photos that are not watermarked, meaning they don't have any markings on them, and that parents could then download directly high-resolution photos themselves and have prints made wherever they want to have them themselves. So there would be no cost to the parents to obtain those photos. Again, the district comes and asks me for photos that I took. I'm happy to give those back to the district. Same way with any requests that, that Mrs. Yonkey would have or anybody else from the school wants me to come in and do a group photo or something along those lines, I'm happy to do that. And same way with, with providing content for Seth, for website and other social media. I cover a lot of events, and I've got a lot of photos. And so that's where I'm coming from. I'm sensitive to the fact that y'all do have school photographers here. I acknowledge that through your book. And from what I've seen, the kids are doing a good job. There are times, though, where they don't have the equipment that I have to give you really high-quality images. And I think that's one of the big benefits of the district is the images that I will provide you, whatever they are, are going to be of the highest quality. And we are a visual society, and we, we, when you open a magazine, what's the first thing you do? You look at the picture, right? That's just how we are. We go to a website, well, the first thing you do is you notice the photo. And if those photos are updated, high-quality images, that's gonna reflect really, really well on your district. And that's something that I could provide and would provide to you.
Where would those images be housed? You know, like, say you take, you know, individual photos of the volleyball team or whatnot. Where would the parents be able to go and, and find those? Would those be on your website?
Yeah, so I, so I, I use a, my, my studio website is through SmugMug.
Yes.
And it's a really high-quality printing company, whereas I don't have to deal with any of the backend. I post everything, and once everything gets posted, you know, I'll send a direct link to the coaches.
Oh, perfect. And they can distribute to the parents.
Yeah.
Okay. And that makes sense. Okay.
Yeah.
Awesome. Remind me to, what dollar amount were we discussing?
Oh, chairman and I discussed $800 for the stipend.
And let me, let me tell you how we kind of landed on that. So when I'm hired to do photography on a freelance basis, commercial photography, my open rate is $200 an hour. And so I just kind of figured, and we talked, and I just kind of brainstormed, well, you know, how much time am I actually gonna give to this? I have no idea. It's basically an open book for the district to use me however you want. $800 is basically four hours of photography for me. And, you know, when I come and I do a team photo, by the time I get my lights in, get everything set up, get everything torn down, get back to my house or office, edit those photos, get them posted on my website, I mean, that's easily an hour.
Oh, yeah.
For one team.
I believe it. Yep.
So if you're talking value based on my open rate, and, and, and I'm not going to... I, I, I think of this a little bit as a farmer's market or like a direct ag business to, to play. If I sign up for like a CNA and I'm gonna get a, I'm gonna get a basket of vegetables every week, some weeks I'm gonna get carrots and some weeks I'm not. But I'm still paying that, that same fee with the understanding that my, that vendor isn't gonna do right by, by that vendor when they can. When they've got those carrots, I'm gonna get those carrots.
Right.
And when they've got those cucumbers, I'm gonna get. But if they don't have them, I'm not gonna get them. And I'm not gonna cry about it.
Right.
Because we have this understanding. It's a covenant arrangement. And that's kind of what I'm thinking about this with you folks. It's a, I'm not gonna keep track of whether or not, you know, I'm getting, you're getting your value out of that $800 or whether or not, you know, I'm offering too much for that $800. This is just an arrangement that, you know, you pay this stipend, I'm at your disposal for the year.
Right, so it would be, yeah, directed. We could reach out and...
Yeah. I mean, any, anytime. And that way, you know, if Mrs. Yonkey needs headshots done or Seth needs a couple of photos for the website, reach, you can reach out to me anytime. You know, there are many, many ways I need to...
Yes. Would that be like per school year? Would be for the world?
Oh, same per term. Yeah, yeah. Per school year.
Okay, okay. I'm just gonna make sure.
Yeah.
Does this extend to like events you cover? So say you would have a state, state track, and you can take a bunch of pictures. That extends to that, too? So those pictures are available via the coaches for parents to download and print?
Yeah.
That's fantastic.
Yeah. I mean, it's great value, it's great value for the, for the parents and the families.
I agree. Debbie, any input from you budget-wise?
I don't have budget for it.
Okay.
Because obviously budget's done.
Right, exactly. Yes, yeah, sure. Other thoughts from board members? Is this something that we want to move forward with? I know, I believe, yeah, this is unfinished from last month as well. So I know I wasn't here, but you all discussed it last month as well.
I think one of the things we brought up last month was being able to track how much actual usage the, the parents and district were getting from the photos. And I didn't know if we ever came to any idea on able to know how many like times things are downloaded or taken off the internet.
When somebody makes a purchase, I have record of that, and I can show you that, but I have no record when somebody takes a screenshot and uses that.
Well, I've been getting on our screenshots, and if we went forward with it, we could see at the end of the year if we wanted to, you know, discuss carrying on for another year.
Right, correct, yeah.
Absolutely.
So you could track downloads up.
Downloads, and that's probably where the value is gonna come. So, you know, the volleyball team, the wrestling team, I shot wrestling just last week or two weeks ago. They're scrolling through, they see their kid, that's a direct download onto their laptop or their phone or whatever. I have record of that.
I know I did for, yeah, football and, of course.
Yeah, it's easy.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, and I agree with you, Cody. I mean, this is something that we can see how it goes. Do we need to make tweaks? Like you said, is it not enough? Is it too much? You know, and I can kind of track it from there, but I think it's a good starting place. I, I think it's a good starting point.
Yeah.
For me.
And, and if you all would just prefer to wait until, you know, the 2023-24 school year to start with, it, you know, it's not like I'm not gonna continue to take the, the team photos upon request. I am.
Sure.
But I just feel like at some point here...
Or could it be something where we do, you know, we're at the beginning of the second half of the school year? Could we do 400 and then reassess in the fall? And see how things go? I don't know. I mean, I'm just throwing it out there, and then we can start fresh in the, in the fall as well for the next school year.
I'm open to anything.
My question would be, would this be something that the booster club would be willing to...
Cover as well?
Cover.
Or at least part of it?
That's a great, the whole school and all sports. It's not...
Right, well, all activities. I mean, you're talking oral and term, you're talking...
And that's the other thing. I mean, you want a nice full picture of your beautiful band with all 86 students there? I'm coming in and doing that. I'll bring my lights in and I'll, so yeah, I mean, this is, it started with just sports, but this goes into everything, and it can. You've got an open checkbook here, basically.
Yeah, I like that idea, though.
Oh, you could want to compromise, Jeremy. Since you can track downloads, I mean, we want to try this going into the new school year. What if we did 500 for the rest of the school year this year? Then this summer, you can tell us, you know, what the traffic was, how many people actually use it, so that way, you know, we can put that on the agenda for July, you know, ahead of August when football and things starts. You've already put in time this sports season to take pictures of wrestling, basketball, that stuff. That way, we can see what the traffic is and use it, use it is before we open the first grade file on that.
And then we can, and then that would allow us time, too, to see if the booster club maybe would support for the following school year. I like that idea.
Seems reasonable.
Okay. Any additional discussion? Any more questions for Jeremy? All right. Thanks, Jeremy.
Hey, thanks for what you do.
All right, next item on the agenda is we will require a motion, if there's no further discussion, to approve the addition of an activity photographer stipend, $500 for the remainder of the 2022-2023 school year. And then we'll reassess for the following school year after that time period. Do I have a motion? So moved. Motion by Carissa. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Cody Spangler. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, next item on the agenda is new business. Will require a motion to approve the following school district's policies. These were all presented and discussed at last month's school board meeting. You can read them there. It's...
The only difference is I haven't transferred over into school letterhead, and all the edits have been transferred over into this document.
Perfect. Thanks, Jay. I know these were already discussed, so, and everyone has had a chance to review them probably more times than they would even like to. So do I have a motion to approve these?
So moved.
Motion by Doug. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Carissa. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Bless you. Next item on the agenda, the school board will hear an update from the technology director.
Hello, I'm just following up with you on that livestream setup here. I did a few more, made a few more calls with a few more things online. The printout that you got in front of you, after a little more looking, I found that they now have some cameras that have the livestream capability built into the camera. There's a select few of them. Panasonic, that would be one of the brands that sort of is pioneering in that vision. Canon had a couple. After looking at a bunch of this camera one, I settled on it seemed like the best value for the money. You get a nice HD camera, which we kind of could use another camera because when I bolt out ones for the sporting teams, I get three of those nice Sony's. And I did one to use for the basketball programs. And like if Ivana or Sheila needs it for a concert, I can get that one out. And that's the one I use here for the board meetings. So kind of free up a little more availability for cameras. We got another one. But then it has the, you basically can plug a network cable into it, and it'll stream right to YouTube for the livestream without the need for an external encoder.
Awesome.
It also has the, it's a wire jack, so I can plug this mic right into the camera and feed the audio from here, which was one of the concerns I had, you know, being able to use this thing that we bought for board meetings. And we could do that with Conics, too. You can run a feed right out of the, right out of the panel. And so you can run the audio, which you're using like for musical, or they have all the wireless mics. And I did that, you know, this one has an input for just a simple audio input. I was able to feed that into the elementary musical, and that did work out pretty good, but this would be a little more capable, it's on the card, and it can record in live stream at the same time. And considerably cheaper than buying a Tricaster.
Right, yes. I like that.
The price, the NSRP on the camera on Panasonic side is like 37, 37 or 3900. I'm not sure why it's only 31 with all this other equipment on Amazon, but it's a new camera, so I mean, it's packaged in a box. So that's a possibility of an alternative if you're interested in that. I just wanted to find a few more things. I'm sure there's tons of other ways. Like I said, we can do it with software encoding and other things, but this seemed like a nice kind of compromise in terms of price. You get another camera, and you get the capabilities you want for a little less money. I did also talk to, I kind of had some informal conversations with Chris and Chris Peters and Terry Jacobson about streaming the local channel. They said the guy I used to talk to was a CSTV manager, Rick Reed. And Chris said he'd drop on the line and call me. And after a couple of weeks, this meeting a month ago, a couple of weeks in, called, and Chris said he'd remind me again, and I still never got a call. I got his number, and I called, oh, I called Golden West and asked for him. I left him voicemail last week, told him I'd be meeting tonight, and called me today. And I was unable to connect with him. So I think what I got from Chris and Terry is obviously it's possible because the city and the church over is Bethany, and it takes over for their service. There's some equipment involved, and that's why I don't know exactly what Golden West have put in, what they've covered, what we would have to buy if anything, ongoing fees. And that was what I was hoping to get out of the board meeting. I just hadn't been able to connect with him. But that would some, be something we could still pursue in, in terms of this, too, or in conjunction with this, basically. Because I, I seen the thing, we probably would still have to have some kind of encoder to get pushed over to Golden West, over to...
Sure.
And not 100% sure this would fit the bill for that. Fairly sure, but, you know, I guess I'm, depending on what you want to do in this regard, I would probably wait until I talk to Golden West before I sign up.
Right, yeah, yeah.
So that's kind of where I'm at with those things. I think in the long term, probably one of my regular annual tech budgets, I'm, I'm gonna look at getting another encoder, either Tricaster or that's the one I was looking at. Anyway, just sort of capabilities, what you want to do and feature stuff. But this would get us by until that point, whenever that is, for livestream board meetings and if the Tricaster died, like in livestream games, all that kind of thing, so.
Is there an option for a warranty on this at all, or what does that look like?
That I don't really answer, too. I, you know, I, I would guess that Amazon probably sells, you know, I like Walmart does like the Square Trade warranties. Probably when I go to the checkout, it'll offer the option for two, three, four years. And yeah, and it's gonna be peanuts in terms of the overall cost, so I would add on whatever warranty I could get with it.
Sure.
And then I, I have, I would guess I could contact Panasonic directly about some kind of... I'm guessing it's a standard 90-day one-year, you know, 90-day support, one-year hardware. Not a whole lot moving parts on these as far as the camera goes. They recorded it as a card, which is part of that whole package, and it's getting draped on and stuff, so. You get to a point where some of these, if it's gonna break, it's gonna be a, hopefully on the roadways, and it's gonna be not worth putting money to do it.
Right. Because the technology will change anyway.
Right, but whatever warranty you have to get, I could get, I would tack that in there, but I didn't actually get to that point in the purchase where I thought that, yeah, so.
Okay. What do you have any other thoughts or questions?
Much more economical than the other one.
Yeah, and the nice thing is, like I said, you get an extra camera, which is nice, too. And it just gives you a little more flexibility with, if there's multiple things going on, I can just hand this camera off to somebody else to still use that one.
So if this does, is compatible with an encoder, what, what's an encoder cost?
So the, the encoder is the thing that basically compresses the video and changes it to a format. You can push out to the internet. It's built into that camera, so you just...
Or like YouTube, you can do that, but you would need something else if you were gonna use it to do Golden West, or you'd need a different camera.
That's what I'm not sure of it.
Gotcha, okay.
I got a call back from Golden West. I don't think they need another camera. I just don't know if there would be some separate external encoder that's, you know,
Specific to that.
Specific to their hardware that I need. I honestly, I'm almost positive I could just use this.
Right.
It's still work, but I, I just don't know for sure if you guys are confident.
Right, and it would still be, regardless, it would be available on YouTube?
Yes.
For books to watch for free?
Yeah, yeah. So anything we would stream, this has the capability to stream right to YouTube and Facebook.
Right.
And there, you know, you can, the contingency with these streaming things is if you have a full pro camera like this, you have to have that encoder to do it. But, you know, you can take your phone, all right?
Right.
And you can stream direct to YouTube off of that without any encoder. But the quality of the camera is, you know, you get, if you watch some of the games where people have a face, you know, iPad up in the stands or holding football games. Careful.
Right.
So, yeah, so you don't need an encoder in all situations with mobile devices, but for this kind of camera, the quality of it, you have to have that, shiny, very good. Well... So, yeah, I, again, I, even if you said, yeah, go ahead, I would hold off until I think we'll talk to Jeremy at Golden West and see what it is. And if it's something completely different, then bring it back up when you get the board meeting.
Okay.
Just on the internet, like I said, we're just recording and just uploading at this one for the board meetings and whatever else in there. point for the board meetings and whatever else in there.
Sure.
And the Tricasters worked the last few games. I mean, those have been streaming fine for the, at least the two that I had this week and I've got the other one scheduled for next week and so it's holding up.
Ish, okay. Sounds good, well, I think that's reasonable, I like this option, but I agree, let's wait and hear from Golden West to see what it would take and then we can, yeah, kind of go from there, but, and as long as the Tricaster is working.
Well, it picks a lot, Tricasters...
Picks a lot, I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
Fingers crossed.
Yep.
Well, I, I think I would be comfortable having you move forward with it so if you get the answer you want from Golden West, so we don't have to wait to another meeting to take action on the rest of you.
Yeah.
But I think this is, yeah, I guess contingent upon that it's compatible with...
Yeah, whatever. And then, you know, they may, I, I, I can talk to, I didn't have a chance to really talk to Charlie either, kind of helped with the church setup, they may provide all the stuff you need.
Right.
You know, and just put it in there, I don't, I just don't know for sure, because I really don't direct into your department, so. But yeah, I could do that.
Do you have room in your tech budget, or is this technically the tech budget?
Yeah, I don't know, so this could come out of the tech budget if there's... I don't know where we are exactly with that. There's been, you know, where we're putting the stuff for the technology in the wrestling room, was it built into that budget? I don't know if that's going to be a building budget. I don't have the answer for that, but...
Who's taking out the building budget?
So, I budgeted a couple loose numbers for like the camera work on some things that we did, that's sort of what I'm doing. I saw a couple things that I ordered in June, I had no idea, so. That you may know better, but...
I think there's, I think there's room for this, okay.
Yeah, okay, so yeah.
Sounds good. Great, let's fill that information.
Sure thing, you bet.
Okay, and next item on the agenda is joint election with the city agreement for the upcoming school board election on April eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. I'm sure you want to speak to the whole bit.
Yeah, I included in your packet the agreement to share expenses of joint school district and municipal elections. Emily, I'll need you to sign your copy and, and give that back to us and then we can pass that on to the city.
Okay. Sounds good. If there's no further discussion, I'll require a motion to approve a joint election with the city agreement for the upcoming school board election on April eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
Yep, so moved.
Motion by Doug, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Cody Spangler, sorry, he's sitting next to us, well, he heard him first. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, school board will hear a report from the city advisory committee board members, that's Doug and I.
On the little January.
Yes, yep. I was just trying to remember when we last met with the full group, I can't remember when that was, was that November, December? I can't remember, but...
It was in November.
Yeah, that's what I thought, I didn't think it was in December, but, yep, we were able to meet, it was two board members, superintendent, athletic director...
We had two guests, we had two coaches.
Two guests, yeah, and then two coaches for the co-op sports. And really the thought was to go back to each respective school, take a look at things, see if there's any interest, you know, take a look at numbers, participation numbers, that sort of thing, and then come back on January thirtieth, which we will do, to discuss if there, you know, if it would be something that fits our district, if it's something that fits everyone's district, if there's any interest at all, to move forward with moving, you know, with looking at additional sports and kind of go from there. There's really no time crunch on any of this, so there's, I mean, we're not doing anything to try and, you know, we're not really trying to push anything along or anything like that because we've got plenty of time to discuss and get input from, from folks as well. So just looking to see kind of what their input has been, if anybody has any input for us, please let us know. And yeah, I think that's about it, Doug, do you have anything else?
We've got everybody's number, so that, that'll probably be the main point of discussion at the next meeting.
Right, participation in persons.
Looking where, where is the participation, why is it, and really listening to the two other schools to see what they want out of the conversation I'm in.
So, yeah, stay tuned, more to come at the February board meeting, we'll get another update there. So, next item on the agenda is a, a report for, from the facilities and grounds committee.
I don't have anything to report on my end, obviously with the snowstorm, I, you know, we made some phone calls just to double check the status of the delivery of the rooftop unit and most logistic managers aren't answering their phone after last week, so have not heard anything, anything different than a February delivery.
We got a new thermostat from there and that seems to be working well.
Yep.
Only update I had was we're in the process of requesting quotes for the walkway, the alternative walkway out front to, that'll make that AD compliant, so obviously the, the work's not gonna be done this time of year, it's gonna be spring or beyond before anything gets done out there, but can go through the process of collecting quotes and get on somebody's list at least so they can tackle that project when the weather permits.
Yeah, that sounds great. Okay, next item on the agenda, the school board will discuss the sale of two tables and twelve chairs to a local church.
So the missionary church reached out to me and I have the email dialogue in your packets and requested some tables and chairs for, I believe they're using it for one of their Sunday school rooms. So we, we met, so Shane and Debbie and I, we have a few tables that are older tables, estimated value, just us putting our heads together and just trying to come up with a, a fair number, it was ten dollars for each table. And then the chairs, we have a few of those that are in that storage room, not being used right now. Those are a little bit newer, we paid forty-five dollars each for those, so we felt that a fair price for those would be, with them being gently used, is thirty dollars per chair. That was the price that we presented to the missionary church and they said that they would like to take two tables and, and twelve chairs, so that would be a total of three hundred and eighty dollars for the tables and the chairs together.
Great. Everybody have any questions or any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, I'll require a motion to sell two tables and twelve chairs at their agreed upon price of ten dollars per table and thirty dollars per chair. Do I have a motion?